Good evening and welcome to the Town of Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting. Today is Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We will call the meeting to order at seven P. M. This meeting is also being streamed live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel, as well as the town's Facebook page, and will be available for playback. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that moment of silence, please. Take an extra week. Okay, thanks, everybody. All right, first order of business, as always, is public comment. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Is there anyone here in the gallery this evening wanting to make public comment at the beginning of the meeting?
Mayor, we have several people that have signed up. They're all for the election ordinance, so if you want to wait for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Joe. The first item of business is our consent agenda, which includes our minutes from October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, our minutes from November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, the reappointment of Al McAvoy to the BZA for a three-year term, which will expire on August two thousand and twenty-five, and he is not here. But a new appointment of Judy Walters, a Sykesville resident on Central Avenue. She is to the BZA to fill a two-year term expiring November two thousand and twenty-four. Before I ask for a motion to approve, I do just want to introduce Judy to the council and let everyone know that I'm very excited for Judy to join the BZA. Thank you for coming this evening, Judy. And so now I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Schofield.
Second.
Second, Council President. Thank you so much, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the consent agenda is approved unanimously. First item of unfinished business is a public hearing to consider, discuss, act on the adoption of Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty-two oh five and Ordinance of the Council of the Town of Sykesville, deleting Chapter thirty-five Voting of the Code of the Town of Sykesville, and to enact a new Chapter ten Elections Establishing Standards by Which Town Elections Are Administered. That may be the longest title to an ordinance ever.
Until the next one.
So until the next one, right, they're all on this evening. The item on the agenda here is basically our opportunity to establish an ordinance that will codify our election process, not already covered in the town's charter. A little bit of background info. In order to provide our election judges and administrators more clarity as to what our specific procedures are, the establishment of a local election ordinance is prudent. Specifically, we are looking to codify our candidacy filing forms that will streamline the filing process and formally establish our provisional ballot process, mail-in voting procedures, and poll watcher designation, as well as conduct rules. Each of these processes have been used, or I should say has been used, in one or more of our past elections. The establishment of this ordinance is not intended to significantly alter the way elections are conducted in town, but rather to offer clarity and ease of participation in future elections. Any further staff comment, Joe, before I?
Just to say that all the items that we discussed when this ordinance was introduced at our last meeting were incorporated into the ordinance. I hope to have caught all of them. There was one minor correction that had to be made in the ordinance that's in front of you, and I believe is in that same section that talked about designated agent. There was a dangling "and" that was not removed, so again, that's just a clerical.
Thank you for making that fix. So the council had a robust discussion and debated the draft ordinance that's before us this evening, as presented on the October tw- at the October twenty-fourth meeting, before voting to introduce it as it is being presented to the public this evening. I'll now ask for a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance Number, I'll do it all again, two thousand and twenty-two dash oh five and Ordinance of the Council of the Town of Sykesville, deleting Chapter thirty-five Voting of the Code of the Town of Sykesville, and to enact a new Chapter ten Elections Establishing Standards by Which Town Elections Are Administered. Do you have a motion by a council member?
Before we open up the public session, Mayor, I'd just like to kind of explain myself a little bit. On the October twenty-fourth meeting, I was arguing for four, ten, ten, four H three, four registered voters and a designated agent. And at that time, I thought that if it did not go through, Section three would still be in the ordinance. So I was a little surprised that it was voted to be taken out on the twenty-fourth. I was not ready to articulate my reasons for four on that. Shortly after that, I think a couple of days later, I made a video, put it on Facebook, tried to give my point of view on why I would like it to be four. I think some of the people are here for that. This week, it really seemed to get a lot of hits. I think it had something to do with the Board of Education mail-in voting being in the news, and I think people were just kind of looking for voting things, so I just wanted to explain. That whole video was made so I could just explain my position on this.
Outside of the council room?
Outside of the council room. Well, I was not ready to designate, I was not ready to articulate my position. On October fourth, I thought that would stay in, at the very least.
Okay, well, we'll come back, we'll come back around after the public hearing for any further comments from the council regarding the ordinance itself, or specifically anything you, you know, want to speak of about your position you're now ready to take.
I motion to open the public hearing.
One second. Thank you. So the motions made by Councilman Schofield and seconded by Council President Carter, all in favor of opening the public hearing.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let me look at the right time. The public hearing opens at seven oh seven. And I guess, do we go down the list?
Yep, I have a list. First one I've sent up is Joni Palco.
Okay, hello, good evening. My name is Joni Palco, and I've been a resident of Sykesville for over twelve years. When I hear the phrase unlimited ballots, my mind automatically thinks ballot harvesting. The very definition of ballot harvesting is the gathering and submitting of completed absentee or mail-in voter ballots by third-party individuals, volunteers, or workers, rather than submission by voters themselves directly to ballot collection sites. As much as I like to assume noble intent, these past few years have demonstrated otherwise, and that integrity is definitely lacking. The current election ordinance specifies that a voter can designate an agent to turn in their ballot on their behalf. It further goes on to state that the designated agent cannot be the agent for more than ten registered voters. There is an old adage of "it ain't broke, why fix it?" So my question is, what has happened to feel the need to amend the ordinance? I have not heard of any election issues in our town that should warrant the amendment. Elections are communicated often and broadly enough to allow voters time to make a plan to vote, whether in person, mail, or use of a designated agent. Mail-in and designated agents should only apply to those voters who are military members of the armed forces, residents who are out of town, and for voters who are disabled. The current ordinance allows for one agent for ten ballots. If you're looking to amend the ordinance and an agent must be utilized, then maybe the ordinance should be amended to one agent with no more than four voter ballots. Allowing unlimited ballots for designated agents sets a dangerous precedent that can lead to voter fraud. Therefore, I am urging the council to vote no on the proposed election ordinance, allowing a designated agent to handle an unlimited number of ballots. Doing so will ensure election transparency and integrity, which is essential.
And I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry, Judy?
I'm Joni Palco.
Joni, Ms. Palco, thank you for coming this evening. I just want to correct something that is that you said from a fact perspective. There is no current ordinance.
Okay.
We follow right now the charter. The whole purpose of doing, creating an ordinance and introducing it for this evening, and to add to our, to our town code, is because we, we do have a voting chapter, if you will, in our town charter. And so this ordinance is to build upon that and actually provide, as I mentioned before I opened this to the public, provide direction for our election board and, and for poll watchers and for the voters themselves. So there is currently absolutely no written or established limit.
I meant to say charter, I apologize for that.
No, that's okay, but even still, if you would have said charter, I wouldn't have corrected you, because I'm not trying to mince your words. It, it's the part that needs to be corrected is that there's a current limit of ten designated agents, or ten voters per designated agent, and that's, that's false. There, there is literally no limit at this time. We follow state law right now, and we have since it was law. And, and I believe the law is, according to annotated code, is from nineteen ninety-nine, the designated agent option. And the, the town has been using the state, the state law since, since then. And that state law does not include any limitations to the number of voters per designated agent.
Okay.
Okay?
So maybe I can, I'm assuming to make sure that we do limit, if it's saying?
I understand your, I, I understand what your, your, your comments are and your desires, and I appreciate them, and I'm glad, glad to hear them, but I just wanted to correct the record.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Mike Miller.
How you doing? My name is Mike Miller. I was mayor from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen. I wore my shirt, I am not the mayor, it says mayor, no disrespect intended, Stacey. I wish they would have put the dates on it, because I really like the shirt. So I wanted to make a brief comment before I read my thing, that as far as I know, no agents have delivered votes to the townhouse in past elections, apart from last election, two thousand and twenty-one, but I could be wrong.
Well, you'd have to ask the proper parties, and we'd probably have to do some research to be able to answer that this evening.
Okay, it's the first I had ever heard of it.
Okay.
So, of course, I'm commenting on this ordinance, and I am opposed to this ordinance as it stands. The town of Sykesville is one point five eight square miles, and apart from the elderly and or disabled, and military was mentioned, I don't believe there's any reason that any able-bodied person cannot get to the townhouse to vote. This ordinance bends over backwards to provide accessibility to voters. We have mail-in ballots and even provisional ballots for those not registered to vote. Again, bending over backwards for those who don't want to register, as most folks do. With that, Section ten four G, which states if an individual cannot request a ballot by mail or in person, I'm thinking, well, that's a pretty extreme case. How is it that a person can't get a ballot or request a ballot by mail or in person with all the other provisions set forth? With the other parts of this ordinance in place, that would really mean to me that the person has no interest in voting in the first place. But we're going to coerce them to vote in the name of accessibility. So while Section G states that an individual may designate an agent, it really means candidates will send out agents to harvest your vote, so you will designate them. I think it would be pretty naive that there is not a conflict of interest. I mean, apart from family members, agents in general are working for specific candidates, and their primary interest is not accessibility, but to affect the vote for their candidates. As we all know, some folks are like salespeople. They're good closers and can, can certainly coerce someone who wasn't going to vote at all to select their candidate. In two thousand and twenty-one, we had four agents affecting over ten percent of the vote, and in my opinion, that was certainly what was happening. I believe Section G and H should be deleted in their entirety, as I feel they're unnecessary and will lead to mistrust in the election process. We do not need this in Sykesville. At a minimum, if it was left in, four should be the limit, and the agent should be a family member or a town employee. I ask the council to consider these changes to protect the integrity of the voting process for Sykesville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Next up is Joe, and I apologize, Kirschenstein?
I didn't catch that, I'm sorry.
Joe, Kirschenstein?
With a K?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, you came to my house during election time.
Yes, sir, I came to everybody's house during election time.
Yeah, this is actually my first time ever coming to a forum. I've never been to one of these. I'm usually a quiet guy and don't say much. My wife encouraged me to come today to talk about this ordinance. I lived here for twelve years. We lived on Norris Avenue. I've lived in the county, Carroll County, since nineteen seventy-seven. Went to all the high schools, middle schools, elementary schools here. I, I read the ordinance twice, and it was kind of confusing to me. I served the Army, in the Army in the nineties, and I like to keep things simple. Kind of disappointed in the way things have turned out the last couple of elections because of the pandemic. I've worked the pandemic, I've worked for the Defense Department. It's kind of discouraging. My family, my friends, my extended family, neighbors, we've all lost hope in our election process over the last couple of years. You know, serving my country, it's been a big disappointment. And I just want to read something, I read today from Colonel Allen West in Town Hall. And this, you know, he explains it better than I could in front of a group of people. Does anyone here remember the good old days when you went with your parents to vote? You stood there and watched them cast their ballot and get a receipt, and before you went to bed, you knew who had won because Walter Cronkite, Chet Huntley, and David Berkley would tell you. What has happened? We have gone from a process that was relatively simple, easy and disruption-free, to a time when we are now told you won't get results for a week or month. And oh yeah, we have always had absentee ballots coming from our men and women in uniform, and they got counted. And I had one experience being in Korea in nineteen ninety-six. We had five hundred people, soldiers on base, and for that election in ninety-six, none of us got absentee ballots. So none of us were able to vote. So something is terribly wrong, and as a former service member, you know, it's discouraging. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Kirschenstein, thank you for your service, first of all, and thanks for taking the time to help us tonight. Appreciate it. Yep.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next up is Ian Shaw.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening, Ian.
It's, it's good to see y'all. Thanks for your service, and I'm here to, to oppose this ordinance as it's written, right? And I feel like I'm not just here for me, right? I'm here on behalf of the four hundred and eighth residents who did vote for me last election, right? So sometimes we don't get the amount of people coming here, and I understand that, you know? And, and I'm also here for the little guy, right? Or gal, for that matter, who thinks that, you know, they got some ideals, and they want to make a difference in their town, and they, they want to get some palm cards and go door-to-door and talk to everybody and feel like they got a shot, right? At winning this thing, and they do, and they did, right? And we don't want to change that here in Sykesville. And the only reason we were using the state process was because of COVID, really. We never had a need for absentee ballot process until COVID came, and I signed off on that. So I take full responsibility for the, for the last election. That's why I didn't come here with sour grapes, and, you know, that system was utilized. And, and it was, and just in ways that I had no idea, right? And so one of my big things in here is a spouse should not be allowed to touch an absentee ballot of a candidate, right? Because those are in that house with that candidate, they're in the car of that candidate. I don't care what you say, it stinks, right? Just smells bad, you know? And I mean, I'm not saying anything's wrong, I'm just saying the appearance of it is bad. So we need to limit that. Look at Tawny Town's ordinance with, you know, no spouse is allowed to touch an absentee ballot. Tawny Town, been around a hundred and fifty more years in Sykesville, right? So they might know a little something. So that's one of my big things. So, you know, we want, we don't want special interest involved either, right? Because I turned down offers, you know? And you, Leo, brought up something that you didn't like from the last election, the time before, not this one before, but the last one, you know? And I didn't do that again, you know, because I was like, you know, I got bad feedback, that tactic, don't do it again, right? Because I didn't like it, so.
Ian, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about. The special interest, I, I don't know what you're referring to.
I'm talking about the last election, right? Where this ballot process was utilized, and the need for this, this ordinance came from that. The last election, really, is why we, and because we talked with town staff, we don't have an election ordinance. So we need one. So I agree, we do need one, and I appreciate you and the staff and everybody bringing it up. But my point being, look, what I'm saying is, is people offered to help get votes and stuff for me, like, we'll help you, we'll come out, we'll do this process, and I turned that down because I didn't want that, you know? I'm like, no, we're going to do this myself, I won't owe anybody anything, right? My point being, didn't harvest any ballots, didn't bring one. Nobody affiliated with me brought one, was, was a designated agent, not one, right? So keeping special interest out is my point on that, right? And you need to limit this, right? If you have five votes per household, absentee ballots per household, five, that would cover ninety, probably seven percent of the people in the town of Sykesville, you know? Wife, husband, three kids, it would probably cover most of them, you know? So we definitely need a limit. You know, I don't think, I think if people knew, and I've talked to a lot of people who, you know, after, you do the forensics, right? I did a FOIA, Freedom of Information Act request. I know exactly who picked up the ballots, who they were, who, who picked them up. I got all the names, who picked them up, who voted, or who designated an agent. It's public information, so just so you know. But anyway, my point being, seven people dropped off a hundred and fifteen ballots at the last election. I mean, was that the goal that we intended to have? And I'm keeping in mind now, too, that the cat's out of the bag. For the next election, everybody's going to be doing this, right? It's not going to be one.
Hold on one second, Ian, I, I hate, this is not going to be, to be rude, it is a protocol.
Excuse me, wait a minute.
You've passed the three minutes, and I just need to get a, a vote on the, a motion on the table to allow you to extend beyond that.
Only got two more points.
Well, that's great. So if we have a motion for you to speak beyond three minutes, then someone can make it and second it and vote.
I'll motion that he is able, that Ian is able to continue to speak past the three minutes.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate that, thank you, thank you for that. So, yeah, so I think if people knew, that's really not what our intent was. You know, our intent was to make it easy for everybody to, who wanted to vote, to vote during a difficult time with the pandemic, you know? So, and, you know, again, I take responsibility for that because I was part of the council, and, you know, I never thought about the, the, the issues that might have come up. But that being said, I think this isn't about the last election, and it's not about the, the very next one. It's about all the future elections, you know? And I think you don't want, the people in power always know the system, right? Think about the guy who doesn't know the system, or a gal who doesn't know the system, who just wants to make a difference in their town. They're going to get gamed out, you know? And I know it's, it's sad, and that's not what we had before, man. You know, we, we turned this town back over to the people by making a difference. Leo, you know, you remember, it was just a bunch of guys who had a, a vision and wanted to, and we printed up flyers and went door-to-door and, and won and did that. And I, I want that to stay the same. I don't want it to be a harvesting event for, you know, everybody, because everybody will do it, but is that really what we want? Or do we want the organic elections we had in the past? That's it, thank you for that meeting.
Next up is Connor Armstrong.
Good evening, Mayor, and the rest of the council members.
Evening.
I'm Connor Armstrong. I've been a member of this community since two thousand and three, and this is my first time coming out and speaking today, but I felt that it was important to, to kind of share my voice and my opinion as someone of a different generation. Regarding the election ordinance, and specifically ten H four, or ten four H, I apologize, and the designation, the designated agent, understand that there's been some concern regarding the integrity of the process, especially when it comes to a few individuals returning over a hundred ballots for, for different voters. While this may sound alarming, I believe that does not harm the election. Part of this belief comes from the fact that there has not been any substantial evidence that fraud is committed on a large scale in elections using the designated agent. Instead, it has shown to help the election process by, by boosting citizen participation. Over the past three mayoral elections in Sykesville, our voter turnout has increased by over a hundred percent in less than a single decade. We have turnout of only four hundred voters in two thousand and thirteen. In two thousand and seventeen, that increased to six hundred, and most recently, a voter turnout of over nine hundred in two thousand and twenty-one, where there was the most restrictions on voting to some people. In contrast, our total residential population has only grown by ten percent in that period. All of that is to say that we have continued to increase our voters and our participation in Sykesville in having the voices heard. From all of mail-in ballots to designated agents, we are making the democratic process more accessible than ever before, all of which should be encouraged. We should not be questioning the voices of our community for those who are merely choosing to vote in a non-traditional manner. I suggest that instead of considering a limit on the number of ballots of a designated agent to carry, we should rely on the integrity of the people of Sykesville. Instead, we should also suggest that if there is any evidence of misuse of power on the behalf of designated agents, then a member of the council, a candidate, or other official should have the right to request a, sorry, I apologize, have a request to, to audit these votes. While there is no proof, there might not need to be any, because we don't understand the full use yet, as has been mentioned earlier in the session, that is more of a nuanced topic. I request that we use this to understand that there is going to be new changes in elections going forward outside of the traditional showing up to vote and traditional absentee ballots. I think that this will enable that voters have the opportunity to choose, choose as many different possible outcomes in the way they vote, and that those who still might be, or those who still might want to misuse the system can still be held accountable. Thank you.
Next up is Julie Delabria.
I don't know what to say, you know? It's just so sad. What has been started, I hope you're measuring the consequence of what you have done. Your responsibility as an elected official of this town is to trust your staff, to trust the town manager and the town clerk, to advocate for them, to represent, represent them, and to help anyone in this town to vote, like I did. I carried ballots, I went out for the candidate I supported, because it's not the point. The point is to help people vote. The goal is to engage people, to work as a community, to check on your neighbor that's working at night and cannot make it to the poll, and is completely disengaged. Why? Because he has no help, he's all on his own, the single mom that takes the kids to practice after work, the people that don't only have disability, physical disability, but that cannot see themselves in a large group because they have anxiety. Are we going to reject them too? Doing anything, limiting the number of ballots, in addition to being attacked on democracy, is an act of discrimination. And what I hope for this town is that we're going to accept results and the consequence of it. A successful campaign is not a campaign that was won. This is not how the system works. As good community member, we need to look out for other people and help them vote, help them voice their opinion, be there for them. And I don't care how, I trust this process, it's a state process. I trust Joe Consentini, I trust Kerry, I watch them open the ballot. We cannot do that to Sykesville. This place needs to see the best and coolest for all.
Thank you, Julie.
Next up is Dana Alonzi.
I'm withdrawing, I'm not speaking, thank you.
Okay. Joanna Schofield?
Hey, everyone. So elections are so important, and it's something that I take really big pride in every year to have my "I voted" sticker, and since my daughters were about two years old, I would take them with me so they could see me vote and know the importance of the process. Not everyone has the ability to have a schedule where they can come in on that day, and not everyone is always nearby. And it's really important that we think about inclusivity in voting, and we know that the world has changed. It's not nineteen fifties anymore. We have good technology, we have new systems that we can develop to increase accessibility for people, for everyone to vote. I asked the council to make decisions to increase the amount of people who can vote and to do it in a way that maintains integrity, so that there's, you know, if people have concerns about what's going on, that they're listened to and that the systems are looked at to make sure that they do have full integrity, but that the end result is that we're looking for more people to vote, not less, and we use new ideas and new systems so that everyone growing up can say, you know what, I can vote too. Thanks.
Thanks, Joanna.
Mayor, that's the, the end of the list. However, I do want to point out that there were some written responses or emailed comments that were sent to the council, namely from Linda Grassley, Matt Wilson, Gay Loskard, sorry, I mispronounced that name, Jennifer Plitt, Jill- I mispronounced that name, Jennifer Plitt, Jill Miller, Natalie O'Keefe, and Jane Mer.
I was just reviewing, I, I'm just now seeing, uh, Linda's correction to her first email, which was truly clerical, and I knew where she was coming from and was unnecessary, but thank you, Linda.
And Joe, for the purposes of the public hearing, all of these will be entered in as-
They are part of the official round.
Yeah, thank you.
So, um, one moment, please. So, um, without having been given the opportunity to read through these ahead of the meeting, I, I will look at this first one, because I see there's a question mark in one of these points, and, um, the question is, what are the requirements to be a designated agent? Um, maybe it would be helpful, which it probably would have been helpful before, um, or to have been included perhaps in, uh, your video, Al, a, an explanation, uh, to the public you are asking for comment from, to include, uh, exactly what a designated agent affidavit is and what it looks like, and what the re, uh, what the fail safes, I should say, or I should say the control mechanisms that are internally put in place, uh, throughout that process of a mail-in ballot request form, and, uh, the use of a designation of agent affidavit, um, and then how those votes are received, those ballots are received, and how they are, um, again, the, the control, the control mechanisms in place. So, um, I don't know if Kerry has a copy of the designation of agent form available. Kerry, if you can-
I feel like that's what she's trying to pull up.
Okay. Well, while she does that, um, uh, I, I know that I did, um, on the fly in August when this was first discussed, um, when it was meant to be on our agenda and then polled, uh, it, the conversation began then, and then again, uh, on October twenty-fourth, um, obviously, we discussed this at length. And I did, in both of those occasions, do my best to explain, um, when it was applicable, uh, to explain the process by which an individual is named a designated agent, and, um, the process by which that actually happens, because it does involve, um, an affidavit, and under, uh, basically, I guess you would say penalty of perjury, um, an affidavit is completed and is required, uh, to be signed by the voter, as well as the designated agent. Um, and signatures on that documentation is also used to be married up and matched against the, uh, mail-in ballot application, as well as that same signature on the sealed, uh, voted ballot envelope that is returned, um, to the board and then opened at the same time, uh, all of the other votes are being counted. So, um, with this on the screen, it might be helpful, uh, if, Joe, you would, do you have a copy in front of you, or do I need to pull it up? Cuz, uh, I just wanted people to understand the, the, um, designated agent's, uh, role in, in the, uh, voting process, um, and how there's different, uh, options that a voter could choose to establish, uh, that designated agent.
Sure, and just real quick, uh, before we, I guess, continue on, did you wanna close the public hearing portion? So that we could-
Um, well, I guess, I, yeah, that's fine, unless someone at the table, um, who has had a chance to review any of these wants to make comment on any of them, or bring them to anyone's attention.
Council can still refer to the comments and ask questions.
Very good, then. Yes, then, um, if, uh, if I may ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Min.
Second.
All right, great. Councilman Keenan with the motion.
I'm sorry.
No, and Councilman Scofield with the second. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay. The public hearing closes at seven thirty-four.
So, as to your question, yes, the designated agent, uh, form does, uh, I guess, give two options for the voter to choose from when designated an agent. One is to simply, uh, deliver the ballot back to them, or deliver the, the application and ballot back to that voter, or carry through the entire process of not only delivering the, uh, mail-in ballot application, delivering the ballot back to that voter, then also taking the ballot after it's been voted and sealed back to the polling place, either in the drop box or back here in person. So, there's the, there's the two levels, I guess.
So, that's what those two checkboxes are to the left. The first one is inclusive of just the first two step, three steps, and the fourth, the second, uh, option is inclusive of all steps, including, uh, delivering the voted and sealed envelope.
That's right.
Great. Um, and, and again, uh, is, uh, signed dated by both parties.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, the, I did bring that up on my video, and I did have this highlighted on the video, what a designated agent must be. So, I don't, so, and I, I think people are a little, I did not bring up the last election to contest it. I brought up the last election as historic, historic data. I was just looking at the data. That's all I was doing. I'm not casting any doubt on this election. I don't want anybody to be mad. It's just, when, uh, when we removed H three, I, I thought it should've been four. I thought it should've been four on the twenty-seventh, and I just wasn't prepared for this section to be removed.
Four on the twenty-seventh? What do you mean?
I mean, when we were, when we were talking about, uh, four H three being ten registered voters, I was, I was arguing for four.
On the twenty, oh, on the twenty-fourth.
On our last meeting.
The meeting was on the twenty-fourth, not the twenty-seventh. I understand now.
So, I was not expecting that to actually be pulled from the ordinance. So, I just did not have a good, uh-
Well, I guess, I, 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 I understand that you might not have been prepared to, um, counter, you know, any one of our particular, uh, comments or parts of our discussion at the time. Um, but, but, uh, using and showing, uh, documentation that someone else apparently, uh, obtained by way of a FOIA, uh, and then you used in your, in your video, um, uh, showing them as ballot, actual ballot documentation, I believe were your words, um, is, is somewhat misleading to a person who's watching a video and doesn't have the background, and it, it looks as though these are voted ballots, um, or could be perceived to be voted ballots. Um, and the, the terminology being used on your video, um, as, and also through some of the, uh, written public comments that we received ahead of the meeting, um, include, uh, limiting the number of votes per designated agent. And I take, I take umbrage with that, because these are not votes per designated agent, these are voters per designated agent. The designated agent, u- using the word vote would imply, or at least intend to imply, that the designated agent is producing the votes and coercing an individual into what that ballot is voted. And so, I do take umbrage with that.
Well, I, I think, well, that was a misspoke. Uh, the reason I showed the, the paperwork is because I didn't want to think, I didn't want people to think I was pulling these numbers out of my butt. I'm like, hey, I've got some documentation here, this is where I'm getting the numbers from. Again, I treated it as historical data. Look back, let's see what happened.
Yeah. There, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the historic data, and others would, would perhaps, um, um, take the, the, the historical data and, and perceive it in a completely different way, as such that there were a hundred, uh, and I believe you said twenty-three, um, ballots that were cast as a result of a designated agent process.
Correct.
And may look at that as a very positive thing, um, as far as access and, and taking advantage of a process that was put in place at the state level and used in the middle of a pandemic, when most people were not going to come out, uh, and vote, or even get involved. So, I'm proud of the turnout that took place, um, on, on May fourth, twenty twenty-one. A record-breaking turnout, I might add. Um, any other comments, sir?
No, I just, uh, it was just my opinion. I don't want people to think I was doing anything. I was trying to explain my opinion on this situation.
Very good.
So, if I make sense, we have the form up. Um, I pulled the State of Maryland regulation for this, so, uh, cuz a lot of people don't know that the designated agent is actually a rule in the state of Maryland. It's codified under law since nineteen ninety-nine. But, I wanna, and I know the form that's been prepared matches what the state of Maryland does. But, under subsection H, where designated agent must be, I'd like to have that section, if this does pass, mirror the state statute even further, because some of the things that are in there, like the designated, an agent of the voter under the section shall be designated in writing, signed by the voter under penalty of perjury, which we do have on the form, but I think if it's on the form, it should be part of the ordinance. Um, shall execute an affidavit under the penalty of perjury that the ballot was delivered to the voter, marked in place in the envelope by the voter, returned to the local board by the agent. We have that on the form. I think that information should also be part of the ordinance, so that, uh, everybody knows it's there.
Does that, uh, document state that the person should or should not be the spouse?
No. Um, the only other requirements are, must be eighteen, at least eighteen years old, which I don't think we need, because we have it as a registered voter in the town of Sykesville, so you're already eighteen at that point. Um, and then the next section is, may not be a candidate on that ballot. That's it. And then there's nothing about limits.
And if we did remove, uh, sections G and, and just be very specific, ten dash four, G and H, wouldn't we just revert back to state law? If it wasn't included in the ordinance?
That's what we have been doing. That's been the past practice, yes.
So, if it's omitted completely, then it would not be, then we would go by state law? I just wanna make sure I'm clear on that.
Unless we wanted to prohibit it.
Right.
So, these add more restrictions in making sure that it's a Sykesville voter versus any voter, and-
Oh, you mean a registered-
In terms of, in terms of G and H, that we've, that we've clarified that they, they can't be from outside Sykesville. We're saying that they have to be a registered voter in Sykesville, versus if we went with the state, people could come in from outside Sykesville and do that. So, ours is actually restricting more of what the state has done to make sure that it's our neighbors doing this as opposed to anybody else.
That's a good point, Councilman Scofield. I hadn't even thought of that, that if we don't do this, it's still an option, because it's state law.
Right. And I, I wanna, you raise your hand. No?
No. Not right now.
Can I?
We're not having a dialogue. The public hearing is closed.
Can I share my opinion?
Please. I, I wasn't sure if you were, Jeremiah had started.
Is that, do you wanna speak, or?
Keep going.
Okay. Um, so, it's the newest elected council member here. Um, if I remember correctly, Stacy and Al had the most votes in our election last time. And that was with, right?
That is correct.
Yep.
Out of, so, out of everything that was turned in, people were voting for Stacy and for Al.
It did.
And then there wasn't, yes. Um, so, I, I don't think that the integrity can be questioned at this point. Um, but I also, I'm in the mental health field, and what I know is that prior to COVID, there were a lot of people who didn't come into therapy, and we said, oh, they don't wanna come, oh, they're not interested, oh, they're whatever. We made a lot of judgments about people. And when we opened up during COVID and allowed people to not just come into therapy, but attend therapy through means that were convenient for them, we had record numbers of people showing up. We had incredibly high no-show rates before that. Prior, after, during COVID, people showed up left and right. It wasn't about people not wanting to, and I think we need to be very careful about assuming why people don't show up. Uh, I don't remember who said a household number, two spouses and a couple of kids.
Actually, specifically.
Husband and wife and kids. So, I got no spouse. I do have four kids. I do have a son serving in the military. I do have one in college. I do have one in law school, and I have one in high school. Trying to get them to vote is hard. My son on the sub, they don't send a ballot to him for Sykesville. You know? But I think that the easier we can make it to have all those voices heard, whether my children are in college and able to vote, but they're not able to walk in. As a single mother of those boys, I was routinely not able to vote, because I couldn't get here, because I was working early, I was driving to outside of the county, um, and I wasn't able to make it in on other times. You know? So, I think we need to just be really careful when we start talking about who's able to show up, um, and making assumptions about that they don't wanna participate. When my kids got older, I'm here now, cuz I can be. Um, so, I think, I think some of the assumptions we have to be really careful about, or making ordinances about who we're gonna have, who has integrity and who doesn't have integrity, or that, because I show up with four ballots, somehow I can count those four, but if I show up with five, somehow I'm now fraudulent. I love my neighbors. Um, I've lived here for twenty years. I'm building a house for my mother to live here, who now is very happy that she's up here. Um, but I love our small town. I respect all of my neighbors. Um, and I don't wanna get into a match of saying, well, yeah, four, four votes has integrity, or a spouse doesn't, or six votes does, or, you know, I, I think we need to trust each other. I like that we, um, only require, that, that we require that it has to be a registered voter of the town of Sykesville. I agree about not bringing in other people to do that. Um, I like the idea of, you know, people are signing under perjury, and, you know, if we, if something needs to be contested, then we can go back and we can have a process to do that. But I think, um, you know, one of the things I wanted to see in this last election was that we increase the voter turnout, and that we get the voices of people who don't traditionally show up. I mean, what, sometimes it's, what, thirty-five, sixty? What, what was, Michael, was the number, you know, when you showed up? I mean, the numbers keep growing, because people want to be involved, but it's hard. So, for me, I, I like the way that we have it designated. I like limiting what the state has, you know, to our town and to our neighbors. Um, and I don't see a need to, to limit it.
Thank you. Um, Leo, uh, what you had presented regarding the, the designated agent and the state, uh, code, um, was relevant, because that was up there. Do you have further comment that you would like to?
Um, I, I do, a little bit. Um, one comment that was made, I don't remember who made it, but, you know, they should be able to just vote by mail as opposed to a designated agent. The mail system is horrible right now. Um, I think everybody sees that. I've got stuff taking six weeks to go five miles from the mail. It's absolutely insane. I would not trust sending in a mail-in ballot these days, because I'm not sure it's ever gonna get there. So, I, that's, that's one point for me. Um, another one is, as Councilwoman, Councilwoman Geroff said, about increasing voter participation. Um, this was a record turnout at the last election. Um, I had had, as Joe earlier today, to run the numbers for me from the last election. It was nine hundred and twenty-nine people, but we have over three thousand registered voters in town, so that only represented thirty-one percent of the registered voters in town still. Um, but it was a fifty percent increase over the twenty-seventeen election. So, it was, to me, that was significant. Um, but, as, again, Councilwoman Geroff mentioned, it was five nineteen to the mayor, but Al also got five hundred and eight. So, I, I don't see how that's, how you can factor fraud into something like that. And, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying you weren't, I'm just saying it's, yeah, I'm just saying, you beat me by one, and I'm still mad about that. So, so, tho- those are just some highlights that I noted. Um, but again, it is, it, to me, it is about actively engaging the town, um, our residents, and, and making sure everybody has an opportunity to vote. It's, um, we are a small town, and I, I go back to what I said, um, Ian mentioned this earlier, my comments, um, about a prior election where it started getting political. We started talking about Republican and Democrats, and we're, we're nothing like that. This is, this is probably the most apolitical body that you could have, because we don't decide healthcare, we don't decide, um, those sorts of issues. We're, we're apolitical. Like, somebody asked me the other day, um, about what we do as a council. I said, we're basically an H lawyer with the police force. That's, that's our role.
It's true.
Hate to say it, but it's true.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what we are. So, we're, I, when people start talking about voter fraud and, um, you know, I, I just don't see that in this town. I don't, I, that's not our purpose, and that's not the purpose of the people who run for council. We're not running for power. We, we're certainly not running for the salary. Um, we're doing this because we want to do it. We wanna help the people in the town. So, it's, it's got nothing to do with, you know, consolidating power, or, you know, getting more Democrats on than Republicans. It's got nothing to do with that. These are just people who want to help.
Thank you.
So, I don't know where, uh, fraud is coming in. I do not think there was any fraud. Again, I was just using the historical data that was presented to me.
You were, but the reports, the comments that were made this evening were leaning towards integrity of an election. The, uh, the word coercion was used, and, um, and, and people deciding how, how much, um-
And it's in the emails.
Well, it's all through the emails. I mean, I've, I've been asking Leo and- The, the, the word ballot harvesting, uh, appears here and was said here this evening, um, no less than five times, and I haven't done more than just- um, no less than five times, and I haven't done more than just, uh, skin, skin, skin these. So tho- those, those types of things have no room here in Sykesville. I, 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 I can't stress that enough. The, the irony, Councilman Grassley, is that if your intentions were to limit or restrict voting in some fashion in order to add fail safes, if, if, if decreasing the likelihood of fraud equals voter restriction, those two things, those two things are mutually exclusive. They don't exist, they don't exist here. And I will not let the distrust of the voters in Sykesville, someone else's distrust of the voters in Sykesville, lend to a conversation about voter restriction. And that is my first, last and final comment about this ordinance and that particular comment, um, or video that you made and the comments that have been provided this evening.
And I would like, I apologize, I'd like to jump back in one more time. I would, I would like to just emphasize for everybody that, again, if we don't do something, i- if we don't adopt this ordinance in some fashion, um, it's part of the process by state law. So it can still happen if, if we don't adopt this process. It, it can still happen. It's state law. So I just want everybody to understand that.
From procedural perspective, that's appreciated. Thank you, Leo. Council President.
All right. Um, totally agree that we need to have community engagement. There's a lot of people that are like, what's the town council? We have a town council. What, what are you voting on? So there's a lot of means out there that doesn't necessarily be, no good mean that people either read it, hear it, know it. So community engagement is so important. So absolutely, we need to be out there letting people know what's going on. By increasing the means of voting, the county does that. We have early voting. If you can't make it during that day, you have, what, five days? We don't have that opportunity. So this is another opportunity that our town has. Um, and I think that we need to have different options for voting. I, when I first read this, I was like, oh, my gosh. I, I, I'm not sure if I really like this. I'm not sure. But the more that I thought about it and the more that I pondered over it, I was a little hesitant about having that designate, designated agent going back to that person's house and picking up that envelope and bringing it to the townhouse. Everything prior to that, I was a hundred percent with. That was my sticking point, but knowing that there's safes, safe, um, I don't know, safe fails out there or?
Safe card.
Fail safes.
Fail safes, thank you. Out there that there's gonna be signatures, three different signatures on three different forms, and you can all compare it. I, I think that this is an option for our residents to continue their voting. The elderly, those that don't feel like taking the time, that work from home all the time, that they're stuck by their computer and they just can't get out here, I think this is an option for them. Um, I do think that maybe we need to add under that, that a designated agent can't be a significant other of a candidate. I think that would be my only thing that I would recommend, but other than that, I'm, I'm okay with everything else.
Thank you.
So my, my comments in reference to this is that I actually really appreciate the civic process of how this is working out. We're obviously a community that has different opinions about, uh, how we move forward with things. Um, the, the last vote was pretty close in terms of what the mayors were and in terms of what different council members were. And I really appreciated, uh, the voter participation that happened. I'm hoping for a similar one, uh, this coming May. Uh, that's when the next, uh, election will occur. And now different folks will know that there's different, there, if this gets approved, that, uh, there are different ways to be able to go out and kind of, um, you know, help get a lot of participation, uh, in this process. Also think that there's quite a bit of confusion in reference to, uh, this ordinance. It's very hard to read an ordinance, um, if you've never read them, and even if you read them all the time, uh, it's very difficult to understand what they all mean. Uh, and there's a number of, uh, great questions that have come in, uh, from different people in the, uh, in the community, and I do think that it should be our responsibility to answer all of the questions that come in and explain kind of what the process is in layman's terms so that not in like bureaucratic speak or legalese or whatever, um, to the extent that we can. This is a, a process that, that we've debated here at the council that has tested the time of the state, um, yeah, or, uh, state processes. And, you know, there's a lot of other municipalities, a hundred and fifty-seven of us altogether, um, that are following similar sorts of, uh, rules. Um, I'm a proponent for inclusivity as part of, uh, the election process. I'd like to see as many people be able to vote, and if that means that I get voted out of office because someone else was able to, uh, get more, uh, you know, voters to turn out for them than me because maybe they had a designated agent and I chose not to have one, uh, it's probably not a process that I'll probably do. Uh, I'll, I'll say that openly, um, 'cause I, I want to be that small guy, uh, to your point, Ian, that goes around and if I get to all the houses, great, and if I don't get to all the houses, okay, I didn't get to all the houses, shame on me. Um, and so, but if someone's that dedicated to trying to help, then, I don't know, I, maybe they're better for doing this role than I am. And to what Leo says, uh, or what Councilman, uh, Keenan says, I mean, what we do is we make sure that, that the town is taken care of, that the roads look good, that their sidewalks are doing okay, that, you know, the lights are on, um, that we're bringing in the sort of development that we want to be able to have in the community. And hopefully, that's always what we've got here. We're in a really good position, not because of what we've been doing, but because what of the history of councils have been doing for the last many, many years. I'm just, I'm gleaning some of the fruits of that now. Um, integrity is really important to me, too. Uh, this is unfortunately, in my personal opinion, it's unfortunate that voting has become such a societal polarizing issue, uh, within our community. I, I wish that it wasn't. I wish that we could believe in the integrity of this process, but unfortunately, we don't. I mean, if we're being honest with each other, there's people on both sides of that. Um, and so that's important. And so, you know, if, I, I kind of like, uh, comments that you made in reference to if there's potential for fraud, if there's potential for inequity, that there's some sort of an auditing process that gets built into this, uh, as well. Um, yeah, so that, maybe I'll stop there. And I wasn't sure, Al, if you were done, I didn't know if you had said everything that you had to say. And one of the, one of the things that I really appreciate about all of us is that we all get the opportunity to speak up. Uh, it's, it's just an important process, part of this overall process.
I, I really don't have anything else to say. I mean, that was part of the reason why I made a video, 'cause there's some things I kind of forget, forget when I'm talking here in the thing, and just wanted to capture everything, so.
So many of the people here know, in retirement, I take classes up at Carroll Community College and study history. And last week, I reminded everyone in class to go out and vote. And I had a young man there, he said, oh, I'm not gonna bother. And I asked why, and he goes, it doesn't seem to make a difference. And I was heartsick over that. Um, and I admonished him, I don't care who you vote for. I'm not gonna tell you to vote for my guy. I'm gonna tell you to get out and vote. Please, vote for whoever you think is best. I didn't try to convince him to go one way or another, I just said, vote. And I'll tell you something about me. When I moved, when I had my brand new still wet ink on a diploma, I came to the state of Maryland and I registered to vote as an independent, and I have not been a member of either the Republican or the Democratic Party in all the years I've lived in this state. So I don't care who wins, 'cause I'm not part of either tribe, but I want people to vote. Congressman, excuse me. Seriously, represent, uh, council member, you can then talk about the mail. Going through the mail is not something we want to do. You're right. I, during the heat of, um, COVID, we're talking two months delay. So that's why mail, I agree with you, mail's not the way to go. Next, I want to point out that accusation is not proof. I can make any accusation I want, but I want proof. Is there any proof of malfeasance that has, has happened? And if there is, talk to that guy. I'll tell you right now, if someone is cheating and cheats on this process, I would expect you to put them in handcuffs. But, next, I need a template to see how to cheat. It's easy to say, well, this could happen. Well, if you're wanna talk system penetration analysis with me, bring it. But I, yeah, let's talk, but buckle up, buttercup, 'cause I'm gonna ask for examples. I'm gonna want proof. I'm gonna want you to run a scenario, and I'm gonna want to test it to see if it works. I, I think people are sincere. I give everyone in the room that belief. I, I know I like people who I don't always agree with, but I know that they care about the town as much as we all do. So I'm not gonna say you're wrong, ignorant, or stupid, or anything bad, because I know you really believe in what you're saying, and I support that. But I need an actual proof. I need a sorry, but I need a flow chart to say, well, you do this, then you do this, and you do that, and then this happens. To say, well, it could, well, I'll tell you, if the CIA, the GRU, the third district of the People's Liberation Army of China, and MI6 all got together and said, you know what, I want to throw the election in Sykesville and get rid of Mayor Lake, guess what? You're going down. But you know what? They're not gonna do that. It's too much trouble, too much effort. We're, we are not the king of earth. This is a small town and, oh, I hated the fact that you told the truth, we're in HOA with the police force, but I believe people are trying to do the right thing here. And I, and if you say, well, this could happen, show me how. Don't say, well, it might. No, I want a flow chart and say, this is where the problem is, is I don't see it. It could be, so if you do, if you find proof of malfeasance or you think this could happen, come and show me. Well, right here, Mark, see, if you do that and then this, it'll happen, and I will be concerned. And lastly, I don't agree with the, the significant other restriction, and I'll tell you why. You know, I'm not a young woman, I'm an old geezer now, and if I suddenly get COVID, I think it'd be nice if the long-suffering Mrs. Dyer could drop it off for me, if it happens early enough. But, um, going back to it here, it comes down to one thing. What is our goal? To restrict voters so we win? I hope not. Or to make as many people vote as possible? And I will be honest, I will assume, as I said, honorable intention, but if someone wants to get rid of me off this panel for encouraging more people to vote, knock yourself out, 'cause I'm good for it. I would rather go down swinging than be voted back because I let people restrict voting. If you disagree, please come and talk to me. That's all I have to say.
I, I just have one more comment. I said I was done with that last one, but this isn't a comment. I do want to read, um, Mr. Kirk, Kirk and Shiner's, Steiner's, uh, email to the, to the body here. I don't know who it's addressed to. It just goes, it just goes like this. I am against any of this bull crap. Enough of the insanity. I will make it my life goal to get people to leave this town. If this happens, shame on you. So, so this is a result of people believing that, that I or any of the individuals who campaigned on my behalf, some of which are in this room here this evening, did something that, that requires a shame on you. And I read an email this morning from former mayor, Mike Miller, who was just as admonishing of my integrity and anyone else who's sitting at this table as a result of the last election, your friend included. And for that, I will probably have a very, very long time trying to get over what it is that came out of, of your attempt to prove or increase the integrity of this election and all future elections. At this point, are there any further comments or, uh, need for discussion amongst the council members before I call for a vote?
Can I just have one more?
I'm sorry, call for a motion? Yes.
Um, you know, the other thing that strikes me, um, on Tuesday of our election, I had the whole day off. Our elections here are not a holiday, you know? So we don't, you know, we, and I agree with, with you, Councilman Keenan, about, I, I don't trust the US Postal Service. I think we saw during COVID as well that we're better handing things off to our friends and neighbors, um, than trusting the, the service because of what happened. And I, from my understanding of our role, that we put things in place to help make things easier and better for our citizens and that not with the, you know, looking for every little loophole in which someone's gonna try and do something wrong, but to set it in place with guidelines, with those safeguards, you know, so that if something does happen down the road, you know, no one predicted the pandemic, none of us have lived through one before, um, but I know that we have to have safety measures in place for the next time something like that happens, you know? So that I would prefer to see us have a process in place to allow all of that, um, and be ready for it as best we can, you know, than restrict things that, you know, prevent us from being able to participate.
Thank you. that we approve the introduction, uh, I'm sorry, the adoption of ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash oh five and ordinance of the council of the town of Sykesville, deleting chapter thirty-five, voting of the code of the town of Sykesville and to enact a new chapter ten elections, establishing standards by which town elections are administered. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash oh five?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any further debate required at this time?
I'd, I'd like there to be some consideration to what Councilwoman Keenan mentioned in reference to the, uh, state law. I don't remember exactly what you said. If you could just read it again.
Sure. Under, excuse me, under election law, section nine dash three oh seven, subsection B, um, we, we match part of that in our provision here under H, but I'd like to add, there are subsections three and four, which specifically state, um, that the agent shall be designated in a writing signed by the voter under the penalty of perjury and shall execute an affidavit under the penalty of perjury if the ballot was delivered to the voter who submitted the application, marked and placed in an envelope by the voter, or with assistance as allowed by regulation in the agent's presence, and returned to the local board by the agent. I, I think we need, if we're having that information in our notice, I think it needs to be part of the ordinance, too.
So if we can agree that that should be added as a body here this evening, then we'll have to redo the, present a second motion and add as amended instead of as proposed.
If I could clarify one, one piece to that, if we can just add the language that says on a form prescribed by the Board of Election Supervisors, just so it's clear that it's, it's us creating the form, not just anybody writing on a piece of paper.
Correct. Yep, yep.
Okay, so.
So moved as amended.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make another amendment?
Yes.
I'm just gonna say this, I know that you're not gonna agree. Um, I'd like to add ten H, number three, that a designate, designated person cannot be a candidate significant other.
So is, so that's a, a separate motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, do we have a second to Councilwoman, uh, Dyer's motion?
Second.
Okay. And then do we have a, a second to, uh, Council President Carter's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. So at this point, we've got two motions on the table.
So there's, there's the primary motion, which is to adopt as amended, as Leo said. There's a secondary motion to amend.
Correct.
Okay.
The, there's, there's a secondary motion to amend the first motion.
Correct.
Yes.
To add the spouse piece.
Correct. So, um, a- a- and this is, uh, one of the first times this has happened in my tenure. So with, with the, uh, amendment to the, uh, original motion, um, is there, uh, enough in favor of that amendment before we vote on the original?
So do we just vote on it?
Call all in favor on the, on the, let's just call it the secondary motion.
Okay, so we'll do it that way.
On adding the spouse.
Yes. All in favor on the secondary motion?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three. Okay, and all against? Aye.
Nay.
Thank you. So now that brings us to the primary motion. All in favor of the primary motion, which is the adoption of this ordinance as proposed with the amendment as indicated by Councilwoman Keenan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Want to oppose? So the ordinance number 22-05, and ordinance of the council of the Town of Sykesville, deleting Chapter 35 Voting of the Code of the Town of Sykesville, and to enact a new Chapter 10 Elections, establishing standards by which town elections are administered, is passed at a vote of six to one. Thank you. So we'll move on as soon as the, as soon as the council chambers are quiet.
And just to apologize for keeping going with this, but it's possible that we'll get answers out to everybody. Joe, is that something that we can agree to?
Sure.
That we'll get answers out?
That sounds great.
Okay, thanks.
Our next item of new business is to consider, discuss, act on the introduction of ordinance number 2022-06, and ordinance of the mayor and council of the Town of Sykesville, amending the code of Town of Sykesville, Chapter 180 zoning, Article 14. Good like that. Special provisions, Section 180-89, signs. I'll give a quick item summary here, and then we'll move forward. Introduction of ordinance 2022-06 for the purposes of removing content-based regulations from our current sign ordinance, and establish rules related to temporary signage. This proposed text amendment was previously discussed by council and then referred to the Town Planning Commission on August 22 of this year. The Planning Commission later and thoughtfully reviewed the ordinance at their regular meetings in September, in October, and again in November. Their report and recommendation was provided to the council in prep for this evening's meeting for our review. I assume we all took the time to look at those recommendations, and in fact, the version of the ordinance before us this evening includes the Planning Commission's recommendations. Beyond that, Joe, do you want to provide us with some pertinent background information on the ordinance itself?
I think you covered it pretty well. I hesitate to say it, but this did start out as the Grassley Amendment, as it related to temporary signage requirements within the historic district specifically. Again, at the time, we did not, or actually, I guess, even currently, we do not have temporary signage standards anywhere within town. This does establish those. And then we did remove all of the content-based regulations that were in there as well.
Thank you.
Specifically to the Planning Commission, I would call them very minor changes that they requested. One was for temporary signage that was placed on sidewalks, basically the sandwich board signage. They wanted to ensure that there was at least three feet of passable space. That's an ADA requirement, but they wanted that codified in the ordinance as well. There was one kind of carryover regulation that talked about signage close to highways, or basically Route 32, that it couldn't be closer than 35 feet to the public right-of-way. There was another about temporary signage as it related to commercial vehicles. And it's like, if a commercial vehicle had a commercial message on it, if it drove downtown, in theory, somebody could interpret that as being a violation of the temporary ordinance. So we did exclude those specific types of.
Because there's a specific regulation against
Mobile signs.
Mobile signs, signs tied or attached permanently or semi-permanently to a moving vehicle,
That's correct.
whether with or without a motor. Okay, thank you.
So again, all of those were included, and again, it's ripe for introduction tonight.
So a question in reference to temporary signage with a 35-foot setback. This weekend, we had the wonderful festival, and then there was that big sign that was out on 32.
Out of town.
It was out of town. All right. So that's the way we got around that. But there's all these weird scenarios.
Well, the city has its own rules and regulations for those kiosks, yeah.
Thank goodness. And I just, and I had one other one. You mentioned the obscene. So I just want to make sure I understood what it meant.
It's worded funny, dude.
Because I did read it like five times, and I still maybe don't know what it means, so.
That's the point.
That's the point, all right. So I'm just going to read it. "No sign shall be permitted that contains statements, words, or pictures of an obscene nature." That's clear to me. That's the first sentence. The second sentence is, "For the purposes of this section, obscene means any material that a reasonable person would find lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value, including depictions or descriptions, in a patently offensive way sexual conduct." So it means that if there's
It's not written, it's not right. I'm going to read it the way it should. I think it's an unintentional misplacement of words.
All right.
And then if it's content you want to talk about, we can, but I think this is the way it's written incorrectly. So I'm going to read it. Councilwoman Schofield read it as written. I'm going to read it the way I believe it should be written.
Okay.
"For the purpose of this section, obscene means any material that a reasonable person would find lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value," here comes the change, "including patently offensive depictions or descriptions of sexual conduct." Is that?
That's probably not right.
Okay.
So my
Clearly, I left some words off there.
My concern, so my understanding of what the Planning Commission was trying to get here is that they wanted to include
They left the word "obscene," I'm sorry.
Has a reference to sexual conduct-related material. And what I want to make sure doesn't happen is that while we're trying to do that intent, that we're not adding other things to what obscene means. In the way that Stacy explained it, I still, I still am thinking that it could mean, you know, something where someone's doing a protest downtown on whatever topic, someone else could see that as being offensive in nature. And I think of the literary, or artistic, or whatever, political, or, I thought that it was very focused, what they were trying to say about, you know, sexual conduct, which I have no issues with whatsoever, but if it has to do with, you know, I don't know, any other topic.
The designated hitter rule.
I don't know what that is. I know what it means in baseball.
That's what I mean. In baseball, somebody may say, you know, I disagree with you, so I'm going to say your view is obscene. That's ridiculous, but I'm sure someone would try it, but that's, I always go to that as an example. What would if someone comes in and starts ranting about something? We all, what? What would happen? Again, going back, what would exactly happen?
Yeah, I guess my concern with, I've said this several other times, but my concern with it is, is not having government overreach for civil liberties, where people should have the ability to say their opinion on whatever topic that they have.
So
Whether it's
So I think the attempt to quell
I'm just wondering, what section are you talking?
Oh.
C. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's
Got a little lost there for a little bit, I'm sorry.
So I think an attempt to quell your concerns, the last time we talked about this, Councilwoman Schofield, because the word "offensive" was included, and that's been removed now, and the word "obscene" is being used, I actually did some Googling today, and, which is why I know I read it the right way. Because I had to look up "patently offensive." I've never been called "patently offensive," so I wasn't sure what that meant. So I looked that up, and the definition itself is kind of embedded into this C8. That said, the definition of obscene is one that has been determined by the Supreme Court.
Okay.
And what you're reading is the definition of obscene determined by the Supreme Court.
Okay.
So I think it takes
I'll back off of it then.
It takes a little bit of subjectivity out of what would be considered offensive versus what is truly defined as obscene.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
The whole idea of including that language in there was because there is some legal backing to it.
Yeah.
It wasn't that, oh, hey, this is, makes it crystal clear, it's just that there's some precedent there.
I remember that, and why we kept in the word obscene, but then we added a lot more words, and that made it confusing to me. And so I just wanted to make sure
Well, they were out of order, too, again, so it's understandable. Any other comments?
I mean, I have two clarifications.
Thank you.
First, with the sandwich boards on Main Street, that you have to have a three-foot clearance. Is there any part of Main Street sidewalks that cannot have a sandwich board because it does not have a three-foot clearance after?
Yes.
Okay, madam.
Okay, so those establishments?
You would not be able to place a sign out there.
Okay, all right. Just, everybody knows that that wouldn't happen at that establishment.
Thank you.
And sometimes it's not even establishment, it's like, it's around the corner. So as we're going down Oklahoma, there's very narrow passage, yeah, so those locations do.
Okay. Second question, and I brought this up when we, very early in the stages of this, I knew that one of the concerns was how big the signs were. So I had brought up a scenario that you can have a, I don't know, a regular sign with the stakes, but is there a limit to how many signs you can have in a row?
Right, from a temporary perspective?
Correct.
No, there's no limitation specifically on the number of signs that you could have in a row, however, if
If they're temporary?
I'm, correct. I'm looking at it from a standpoint of an administrator. If you took all of those signs as one
Yes.
Then they would still have to meet the size requirements within the ordinance.
And that's how the administrative administration would look at it?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Are you, that is the way? Because, I mean, the reason I bring it up is because that did happen up at the middle school, where maybe there were like, I don't know how many, if it was 10, or, I didn't count them, but it was a lot of the same sign in a row.
Like a letter?
I can't remember exactly.
It was like, it was like, corn sold in 30 yards from here, look now. Yeah, I've seen those, too.
That's on 32.
Well, I was also talking about the last election. Because I thought that a lot of this had to play into how we do the elections, too. So it's, but I did see that in the middle school when I walked in for, and it had to do, I think, with the teachers, but it was, anyway, so I guess that's
But again, those are temporary.
Right.
Right? Because they're up for less than six months.
Well, wasn't that your question? It's temporary. How many are temporary in a row?
But there's a size limit to temporary, too.
A size limit, yes, yes, thank you. That was your original question, I'm sorry.
And it met the size limit. It's definitely less than three by three, I think.
But if you consecutively put them together, it's no longer that limit, now it's
It's a banner.
It's a banner.
It is a banner.
Well, and keep in mind, the nine-foot, the nine-square-feet size limitation is only in the historic district. Once you get out of the historic district, it's much better.
Yep.
Mark, since we're heading in this direction, do you have comments other than about baseball?
No, that's my point. You'll always find someone who will complain, but looking at, and I'm not a lawyer, so I defer to Councilwoman Keenan, but looking at the Roth and the Miller tests, the phrase utterly without redeeming social value, and more importantly, taking as a whole lax literary, artistic, political value, I think we're safe that using these standards, people can protest peacefully and in order, and still make their point, or without infringing on their liberty. I would hope we, common sense would prevail, and our department has exhibited common sense on a daily basis. They don't always agree with what people are saying, but they're respectful of it. I don't see a problem. I'm good on this.
At least twice a week.
I'll make a motion to introduce
I've got lots of comments. Yeah, I had
I thought the obscene thing was the
No, I was helping with his comment about the obscene. Are there comments to my right?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, so I just have a couple. I have a question. Are murals signs?
Do they display some sort of commercial message?
Welcome to Sykesville.
Well, I guess we, I, that's, I guess it could be subjective to answer that question. I don't know if that's a purely objective question, but the reason why I ask this, to ponder upon, is if I'm reading this correctly, "The total area for all signs shall not exceed four times each linear foot of the building, wall, most nearly parallel to or fronting on the street on which the building has its address." So as an example, the building that is occupied on the first floor by Pen and Up Acupuncture.
Okay.
Okay. "That beautiful bare brick wall, I hope one day to be covered with a huge permanent mural," right? But 200 square feet is, and, oh, and this goes on to say, "In the case of a corner lot, an additional 25% of sign area is allowed and may be authorized." All right. So let's just say that the building that I just referenced is 75 feet deep, Main Street back towards the townhouse. I'm making that number up. I didn't measure it. Let's say the front of that building is 30 feet. Well, that brings us to something that if you multiply by four, you get way bigger than even 25%, more than the 200 feet, square feet, which would be, which would disallow a mural to be on the side of that building in excess of 200 feet.
Right, so
200 square feet.
Is the mural a business sign that's regulated under this code?
No, it would not be.
So I think that's where you eliminate that distinction.
Very good.
The idea behind these regulations are for business-related signs
Very good.
that are permanently affixed to buildings, advertising, whatever's going on, on those structures.
Okay. And then, so, but I have, okay, that's good. Because I'm thinking like the old-fashioned ghost signs, where like, they're left on really old brick buildings and they're faded. If we wanted to recreate something like that on the side of the building, indicate what that original use of that building was, let's say, it wouldn't be being used as that now, so it really wouldn't be a business sign. So it'd still be a mural, and it'd still be okay. All right, thank you. And that was in, I should have said C4 if I didn't. We've talked about C8. C14 says, "No pennant, pinwheels, or similar circus or carnival-type attractions shall be permitted in any district other than a town-approved special event." So my question is, this would also include those real slender, like parachute material, not the blow-up ones that like
Those are crazy guys?
Yeah, we know those are considered, yeah. But I'm just talking about like, the ones that sometimes are six, seven, eight, 10 feet tall, and they're the same Say again?
The flag.
Yeah, just like the flag, and it's attached on one side vertically
Oh, it's like a banner?
Yeah, it's like a vertical banner. Those would be exempt as well. I mean, those would be not permitted either.
Correct.
Except on an event day. Thank you. D2, B, and C overhanging signs? These are, this is like a repeat of the historic district guidelines, correct, with the, not 42 inches, well, I'll just read it. "The sign must have an eight-foot minimum height from grade." This should say clearance height, no? Because are we talking about the top of the sign is at eight feet from grade? Because that's the height.
Right.
But we really mean the clearance. So why don't we add the word clearance? I'd feel better. Thank you.
And there's some signs that are grandfathered in because of the
There is no possible, right? Eight-foot clearance. Thank you. And then D1
If those were removed, would they be able to have them again?
We, in the past, the new owner of the business would get a sign, and it would be approved.
Okay, going through the historic district?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there was like variances made for those that are impossible to, they're basically, they even get, they even have special hardware to lift it up as high as possible off of the front of the building. You're welcome.
Sorry.
Habit I have that someone picked up on a while ago.
I don't know what you're showing.
And in D6, this is my last comment, so we can move on to the next item of business. "In D6, the town zoning administrator or his or her designee shall give 15 days' written notice..." Dot, dot, dot. You know, I'd like to change that to the word there, and get rid of his or her pronoun.
T-H-E-I-R, not T-H-E-R-E.
Correct, thank you.
We're allowing a designated agent for that?
We are. Yes, you're welcome. We are, yes, you're welcome.
Levity to the room.
So since I've already asked, I, I assume mine was the last comment on this, so I guess at this point, staff is recommending that we introduce this ordinance this evening, and then schedule a public hearing at a subsequent meeting, do I have a motion? Okay, we have a motion made by Council President Carter and a second by Councilman Keenan. Um, and that motion is to approve the introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-two dash oh six, and ordinance of the mayor and town council of the town of Sykesville amending the code of the town of Sykesville's chapter one eighty, dash zoning, article fourteen, special provisions, section one eighty dash eighty-nine, signs as presented. Um, that is the motion, any further comments or questions or debate? All in favor of the motion by, state by eye?
Alright.
Uh, any opposed? That motion passes unanimously, um, brings us to number seven on our agenda. Consider discuss act on the introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-two dash oh seven, and ordinance of the council of the town of Sykesville amending chapter twelve, ethics of the code of the town of Sykesville, to incorporate changes required by the state law regarding conflict of interest and financial disclosures provisions, and changes to refer to the town generally rather than its agencies, boards, and commissions. I'll summarize this quickly for us. Each year, the town must certify that our ethics ordinance is in compliance with all current state standards. We are requesting several minor amendments to ensure compliance. The town's legal council has drafted this ordinance and is making the recommendations as presented in the draft ordinance you see this evening. Joe, if you'd like, please provide us with pertinent background regarding legal council's recommendations, if you have some.
Uh, again, really, this is just a reiteration of, these are changes that the state has made to the state ethics laws, and again, part of their requirements is that all local ordinances must comply, or closely, closely as possible mirror what the state has. So this has nothing to do with anything that the town has done that's triggering these requirements, and simply that the state code has been updated. Therefore, we need to update our, our ethics ordinance to match those, those pieces.
Thank you for that.
So for example, on section two, uh, I, uh, uh, it says disclosure of confidential information, um, and then it talks about, other than and discharge of official duties, an official or employee, or former official or employee may not disclose to use confidential information that the official or employee acquired by reason. That's something that's in the state now, and so how do we know if people are doing that or not doing that? Do we have any monitoring controls? So we won't have any monitoring controls, and then how long back does that go, forever, or?
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
This is assuming that there's certain, uh, state secrets that the town would have that could never be disclosed, and it simply doesn't exist in the town. Now, on the state level, maybe it does. So that language has to be in there, but for, for our purposes, it's simply just not a provision that's ever gonna be enforced.
So for, so the, the thing that I think of is, you know, and I don't know if people do this or not, but let's say that there's a real estate thing going on, and that could go on for a really long period of time. You know, you, you become aware of things when you are sitting here in one of these, uh, seats. And how would we ever know if someone used that or didn't use that? If, you know, ten years from now, it just, I, I don't understand why there's not, like, do, can we put like a number of years that they have to do it? Or, cause that's what I'm a little bit more familiar with, working in the, in the federal government, is that there's a two-year period of time for certain individuals, and then there's a lesser period of time for other individuals.
The look back, you mean?
That's right, where it's like for the, you have to sign something that says, for the next blah, blah, blah period of time, you're not gonna use any of the information that you've learned, blah, 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 you know, to, before, it just seemed very odd to me that this was here with like a forever, in perpetuity. And I didn't know how we would be able to deal with it, and then let's say that someone did do it wrong, okay, now it happens.
Well, do you want, like my answer to that, or what the legal answer would be, cause my answer is...
What time will be? I just, I just didn't, I, it doesn't seem to be implementable, and why would we have an ordinance that has non-implementable policies in it?
Because we're required to have an ordinance that matches what the state tells us the others law has to be. I can look at the time limitation to see if there's something we can add there.
So this, the, the county had to do this also. The last commissioner meeting, they went through the same thing we're going through right now. Did they have an answer, did anyone bring up any of the... They just, they voted off. Cause I had the same thing on, like further down on K, I don't know what section it is, cause it goes K then C. Um, but there's no B or A, so I, I don't know, um, and then it...
These are just sections of the...
How hierarchical of you. So public...
So this isn't our whole thing?
This is not the whole ordinance.
So this is just what they changed?
Yeah, these are just...
Okay, maybe that helps. On page three, on page four at the top of it, they just jump in some information, the commission, and they list a few different entities, and then further down, they talk about those entities a little bit more. I was like, well, we don't know anything about any of these entities, but again, this is just coming in compliance with the state.
Correct.
Okay, alright.
So I have a question as well, um, the relationship with University of Maryland Medical System, state or local government, or quasi-governmental entity? Must disclose, yay, good thing, but I'm trying to find it again, but I found it over the weekend where it said, however, an FOIA is, or is issued...
You have to, uh, uh, this is a question I asked specifically, is you have to disclose it, but that information's not, not submittable to the public if anybody were to ask for it.
And that is the part that bothers me. The idea that if we were working for it, I should, if I was working for it, I have to report it, yes. The idea that I can hide under that is what bothers me. I, it sounds like something the public has a right and a duty to know if I'm working, if I'm gonna make a book, if I'm gonna write a book, not that that could ever happen, and sell it to the University of Maryland Medical System and have riddled with errors, but I'm gonna sell billions of copies.
There, there are several other adjustments that I would love to make to this ordinance, but I've been told by council, you can't do it. Now, there's a few...
Not this council, council.
My legal council.
I know what he means, but that's my point, we're not even allowed to ask questions?
Oh no, you can ask questions. I don't wanna make answers. The time limitation piece on the, uh, you know, how, how long can you use state secrets, or how long you gotta keep state, state secrets, I can find out. And if that, if that is something we can add, that'll be part of, well, when it comes back before you in two weeks, uh, we'll add that provision.
Cause I am bothered by the fact that if someone were working for the University of Maryland Medical System and reports it, that the public has a right to know that. And the idea that it's being hidden bothers me a lot.
Maybe the la- the last thing that I had is, you know, there's some things in here in reference to gifts, and I'm very familiar with these things, again, because I work for the federal government. But I, I would be really nice if we put some policy or procedure in place that protected the council. We go to different events as a group sometimes to, you know, we just went to a, a celebration not that long ago, I just wanna make sure...
Beer festival?
Yeah, there's, there's that, which is worth more than twenty dollars, and so it's, like some of these sorts of things, if there were some protections in place so that I don't have to think about this, and that the town is basically saying, you can do it or you can't. Like if you come, it's okay, whatever happens, happens, um, while we're there, and we just kinda keep it in, uh, mind that if there's something else that happens, it's a little off while we're there, that's different. I just, I, I think there should be, I'm not saying this very well, I think there needs to be some protections in place for our own internal processes in order to safeguard the members of the council.
Well, again, all this, all this requiring is that you disclose those gifts, it's not saying they're...
That you can't have, like, maybe I didn't read it that way.
You have to file under the section, a schedule of gifts in excess of twenty dollars in value or totally more than a hundred dollars in value.
And so is there going to be, uh, cause I don't know if I've ever filled something out for the town, is there gonna be a disclosure statement?
Oh yeah.
Okay.
It's a nice heavy little book, it's like that thick.
Okay, but the state ethic laws are laid on top of this, you know, you can't accept a brand-new car because that's against the rules, and if you accept twenty-one dollars, you have to report it.
There could be property there, an accusation.
That's what I'm saying, that he, he, I'm agreeing with him. We'd be nice to say, you know, the law says you can't do this, you can do that, but you'll have to report it, and if someone gives you a three-dollar trinket, never mind.
Doesn't anybody wanna know why the Maryland, University of Maryland Medical System is on there?
Oh, I know, like I said, I'm gonna write a book, and I'm gonna have lots of spelling errors in it, but it's gonna make a lot of money.
Okay.
No, it won't.
It's apparently because of the...
But that's why I'm saying, but we, we should have to set that out to the public and go, yeah, well, about that. I'm really, I mean, that really bothers me a lot.
We have introduced so many ordinance this evening and discussed so many ordinances, I don't remember who has spoken about this one and who I've asked and who hasn't.
We've just gone down here.
Just this way, I turn to my right, anything, anything, anything.
Just to let you know, I didn't have anything.
Right here, right here. So I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-oh-two-two dash oh seven, ethics, amending chapter twelve.
Second.
Wait, uh, to, uh, and instruct staff to schedule a public hearing, blah, 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 blah?
Oh yes, that's of course what he meant.
And instruct, and instruct.
I'm sorry, I was looking, uh, I was looking at...
How, how do we do it this way, is there a motion to recommend that we move to accept the introduction of ordinance twenty-two-two dash oh seven, ethics as presented, and instruct the staff to schedule the public hearing and adoption for November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Grass, thank you, Councilwoman Dyer, any need for further discussion? Okay, with hearing none, I will call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Unanimously, we are, um, accepting the introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-two dash oh seven, ethics as presented, and instruct the staff to schedule a public hearing and adoption for November twenty eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Thank you, alright. Um, I just keep reading these, shaking my head, take these away from me. Um, I will begin with the first announcement, the next meeting is Monday, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, we have volunteer opportunities, wait! Yes, I'm sorry, I thought I skipped the, a police public safety report, but that's after this. We have volunteer opportunities available on Historic District Commission and Police Auxiliary. If you are interested in listening to me this evening or any day in the near future, please email town@sykesville.net if interested for more information about volunteering with the town. That gets us the staff updates, we will begin with the treasurer's report. Snazzy treasurer, would you like to come forth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've talked enough.
Not really, can Joe always, like, interject something? Do you want me to introduce you here? Sounds like an audit, though.
Please not. Stay away from that, stay out there. Don't, don't get me mixed up. Deep breath, uh, good evening, everybody, at this time, I would like to introduce the October Treasurers Report that I hope you don't find patently offensive. Just like that, Halloween is coming, gone, and we're one-third away through fiscal year. So looking at the total revenue, we're pretty much on pace, we're tracking nicely. In fact, I compared it to a year ago at this point, and we're actually about twenty-seven thousand ahead. So no, no worries there at this point. Uh, in terms of the expenses, there's a couple areas that have gotten a little, little out of whack, nothing too major, but I'll go quickly through some of the departments, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to memorize my famous report, but uh, in the police department, no offense, chief, this is... There was just a couple areas, the computer software, uh, has gotten a little high, we're about almost ten grand over what we had already budgeted. Uh, but we had reasons for that, the one we bought I, IA Pro software, uh, that has been used for, I guess, case management and advanced statistical analysis.
Required by the new laws.
And so, and that is covered by a grant, so even though we're spending that money, we will get that money back, so one pocket, and then in the revenue pocket, you'll get a plus side there. Also, we spent five grand on Motorola, the evidence library software.
Also required by the new laws.
So, that's pretty significant changes going on there.
There was, actually.
Okay. So, we're good there. Uh, same training and education, we're about five over, uh, mainly because of Officer Kurtner training, uh, tuition, which is also covered by grants, like five K, so, and then also a smaller, for mental health assessments, also, a small grant is covered. So, a lot of grants going, well, covered by the doo-doo. Moving on, under Streets and Roads, uh, under Contracted Services, we've talked about this before, I just thought I'd brought, just gonna remind you that we're twelve over, and that was because of the outsourcing of the trash collections that also were covered, but I was saying, cause we were understaffed, so save money salaries, costly outsourcing. Uh, the parks maintenance area is probably the one that's like starting to jump out more than any other section. As a whole, we're already about two grand over budget, um, and there's some areas that, uh, we're kinda sliding over. Although one line I own, property maintenance, um, we're about five grand over, but I think it's mainly because we had some projects earmarked for fiscal year twenty-two, but now they've kinda kicked in this year, unfortunately, uh, grinder pumps, five K, Jones Park Landscaping, three K, Payne Stadium, the Snack Shack, three K, and then we repaired some water leak for one point seven. Uh, we had some park vandalism, as you're aware, it's taken that we weren't quite aware in terms of budgeting. Uh, tree care, we're spending some money in Cooper Park, getting rid of all the trees. Just a couple trees.
Say that.
Kidding, kidding to the public, I'll tell you. Uh, we weren't expecting to take the extra tree down, that was cause we were thinking it was gonna...
Trimming.
Tree. In the sediment pond, stormwater maintenance area, uh, we had to spend six grand, cause, uh, someone home owner's property was damaged, that was adjacent to the stormwater runoff, so we took care of that for the individual. And then on the Little Sykes property maintenance, we're a little bit over there, cause we helped DSC with the town support for improving the park there.
Uh, real quick, the, the stormwater maintenance piece was, uh, this is the, the mystery stormwater line that runs through some private property. So it wasn't property being damaged adjacent to a pond, it was just, there's a line that may be public, but probably isn't. It wasn't done right in the past, we, we had a partnership with the property owner that they would provide the labor, we would provide the materials, that's how.
And the final end to a two-decade-long saga. Not a end of resolution to at least a short section of it, right? Yeah.
We'll find out at the next big storm.
The, the immediate issues have been taken care of, yeah.
So bottom line, the town is still currently a hundred thirty-three thousand ahead of budget, so even off, putting all the negative stuff that just I did, so, don't worry about that. Uh, quick review of the check register, real fast, uh, we spent, uh, money for Carroll County Government, six K, you might have seen, uh, that was for the purchase of SLOP, that was last year, uh, should've been in last year's, uh, financials, but we just literally got the bill like a couple, like about six weeks ago, I mean, it was like so late. So we couldn't get it in time because of the auditing cutoff, so we had to kinda eat it this year, so I'll try to follow up a little better next year, make sure that doesn't happen. Uh, CPA, we spent a hundred ninety K in patching paving, Springfield, Public Works Yard. Uh, in KCI, we spent about twenty-seven engineering costs related to project covered by ARPA funds, so we're good there. Uh, just the last comment, I think I promised everybody we'd have the audit done by last month, we did not. We had to extend it thirty days, so we're hoping for November thirtieth is the deadline, which could still be the best effort by the funniest department since I've been here. And that's my wrap-up of October Treasury Report, any questions?
Craig, just one, uh, question, I just wanna confirm that I'm reading this right. For legal counsel, our fees so far have been fourteen thousand, almost six hundred, and so we have about ten thousand four hundred remaining for the year, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so the twenty-five thousand was what was budgeted for the whole year?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're tracking on that, thanks. It's gonna require a budget adjustment at some point.
Right, yes.
I was gonna say that.
Indeed.
You can see that's coming up Route thirty-two, can't you?
It's just for October, the end of October, like, not, not this month. Just that fourteen? Well, I mean...
Well, it's your date, say it's your date.
Doesn't include this month, is what you're saying.
Correct, correct.
You have two more months.
And with...
Four months were, so...
And the difference on professional services than legal services, all the legals covering, uh, are attorneys, the professional services are for other things, right? Like engineering and whatever else.
Yeah, legal has its own line.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just making sure I'm tracked, thank you.
Good question.
I have a question, comment, I know that you're almost finished your audit. Um, in years past, it's pretty standard that we have a presentation that the auditor come in.
They will leave.
Oh, okay, I said that, we just get it.
I know.
Okay, never mind.
Are we, cause we decided we weren't having, we're just having one meeting next month, or we only got...
Usually in December, we only have one meeting.
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
We're having one meeting this year, this month.
So, maybe I, and, and perhaps I should not have cut you off in anticipation of your question, uh, Council President Carter, I see where you're going with this, because we only have one meeting in December, if we would've finished this in November, finished this by now, then we would've been able to have had it in November, that the, the presentation, which was the plan. But now with only one meeting in December available, will we still be doing that?
Yes.
Presentation?
The, the, the goal is to still have the presentation at the first meeting in December, I think, is what we've told you.
The only meeting in December, yeah, the second Monday of, of December.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else have anything for Greg?
It's always a well-attended... It's always a well-attended meeting. Everybody loves.
To hear the results.
Good job, Craig, thank you.
So, next we have on our uh, agenda, the public safety report, Chief, please.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In the interest of time, I'll just uh, let you know about the public safety report in terms of uh, period. It covers October seventeenth through November sixth. As you can see, it's a large public safety report covering seven hundred and seventy-two total events. Um, just a few highlights, the thirteen community policing events, forty-nine foot patrols, three hundred and seventy-five patrol checks, sixty traffic enforcement initiatives, again, seven hundred and seventy-two total uh, events. I believe there was a question about um, some clarification regarding community policing and foot patrols. I just wanted to address that, it was, it was a very good point. I've instructed the officers from here on out, in order to um, enable us to categorize these two things effectively. The foot patrols will be without community interaction. So, a lot of times they'll do a foot patrol, say, of Warfield at night, or even Main Street at night after hours where there's no community interaction, so that'll be designated as a foot patrol. Community policing is, is, foot patrol is part of community policing, so if they do a foot patrol during business hours and interact with the community, we're gonna label that community policing, just so from here on out, so you know what those categories mean.
Thank you, Chief.
Of course. Any questions about any of the twenty incident reports? Again, a very busy period. That's a lot of, of reports for that, basically three weeks. Any questions?
Two questions.
It's me.
Um, the destruction of property at Miller Cooper. Are we, are you doing more to try and, it seems like it's increasing?
I'm glad you asked. Uh, we have some very good news in that, with that regard. Uh, because Craig mentioned uh, the, the damage at Cooper Park, and I don't know if we have a total yet, uh, the total damage, but I think we're working on that. But we have suspects. They are juveniles, there's about seven of them. We're in the process of contacting them and their parents, and they'll either be charged or their lucky parents will be reimbursing the town for all the damage. So, we believe they're responsible for all the incidents.
Oh, okay, great. Does this put the phallic phantom?
That was patently offensive to me. No, I'm not sure what, yeah.
We had this person going around spray painting things, I thought the, between.
You can't blame all of it, obviously.
Finally gotten these kids under control.
You read the boiler test earlier. You're, you're not supposed to.
It has redeeming political value.
These are the ones that did the damage to the men's and women's bathrooms in Cooper Park. There was multiple incidents you were referring to. Some of them were captured on this, this uh, this report. They're gonna be charged with all of that.
Good work, Chief.
The other question I had was the, with the new, with marijuana becoming legal. Do we know, I noticed that some of them were possession, some of them were paraphernalia. How does that start to affect? Do you know how that's gonna play out?
It hasn't all been rolled out to us, but um, once, once that law does go into effect, I believe July of next year, then someone who has, I think it's one and a half ounces in their possession, there'll be no, no charges. I mean, we're not charging them now, only because the, the prosecutor, this state's attorney has, has already told us, they will not prosecute. So, we're not charging. What we do is seize marijuana now and destroy it, uh, but once the new law goes into effect, we won't even be able to seize it. Unless it exceeds that limitation, and, and there's, there's other restrictions, juveniles, um, growing marijuana in your house, I think it's limited to two plants. So, there, there'll still be some ways that people can be arrested for it, but, but it'll greatly change.
And then um, the incident on ten twenty-two. Does he just happen upon things? Lieutenant Kilgore? Pretty impressed. Um, he was on his way up to Westminster and witnessed a pedestrian being struck?
Oh, that was actually um, Morgan, Officer Hoppa. Yeah.
Oh, it was a dispatch by?
Yeah, the dispatch at the top.
Okay, that's why, oh, got it, sorry, I read it backwards.
Interesting night for her, yes.
So.
She got requested uh, to go to Westminster.
I was wondering why he was sent for a female search, but I. So, um, so, why he was sent for a female search?
No, poor Officer Hoppa was minding her own business, doing her good job down here in Sykesville. She got called to assist in Westminster because they requested a female to do a female search, and on her way en route to Westminster, and while in the city limits, she watched um, a car accident take place, which included a pedestrian being struck, and she didn't make it to the female needed search. So, anyway.
But she stabilized the, she immediately responded to the, and stabilized the person who was injured, the pedestrian.
And we're actually getting a lot of requests for that, now that we have two female officers.
So, I was wondering about that.
Something that we're gonna have to monitor. We certainly want to help our allied agencies, but not to the detriment of our town, especially if we're, we're busy, or there'll, there'll be times where we just have to say, no, we can't do that. Um, but we, we certainly want to help.
So, are they the only two female officers in the county?
Seems like it, but that's not true. Uh, I guess it all depends on when they're working that, that particular day, and who's available throughout the rest of the, the county, so. It's something we, we are monitoring.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for those thoughtful comments regarding the uh, the limited uh, female officers in, in the county. Anyone?
Nope, I'm good.
Chief, I want to have you extend Officer Young a grateful thank you for
I was gonna mention.
amazing things that she did on Halloween, handing out candy.
Stealing my thunder, yes. You know, she made those sixty bags on her own, on her own time, on her own accord, paid for it out of her own pocket, and, and did that. It was amazing. When it was brought to my attention, we, we immediately reimbursed her, made her, made her be, made her take the reimbursement. Uh, but it's just an incredible thing that she did on her own. It's so proactive and so much a part of community policing that uh, she was certainly recognized for it.
Well, thank you. That, it makes a name for herself. It makes the children say, oh, Officer Young, I have a problem, and very open.
It also makes our young women and, and young girls in town look at her and say, hey, I want to be a police officer, too.
Excellent role model. She certainly is.
Um, and thank you for that thoughtful comment. I also would like to uh, extend a thank you to um, Officer Picardo for that same evening and his behavior in his, in his police cruiser with his uh, loud um, exceeded almost external speakers playing from the car of the Ghostbusters theme song. Which somehow he didn't get sick of. It was amazing, because we had three uh, young women dressed, or four young women dressed up as the newest version of the Ghostbusters movie characters, and they took very kindly to uh, to Officer Picardo, so.
It's funny you mention that, because Lieutenant Kilgore had, had um, witnessed that, and he was somewhat um, upset by the fact that Officer Picardo was blaring Ghostbusters from his, from his police car, because it was kind of not a violation of policy, but just something a little unusual, but then when people came forward and, and said they appreciated it, I said, let it go, you know, you're doing a good job.
That's community policing, and should be on that report, if I'm being honest. That's how, that's how welcomed I think it was.
In our neighborhood, a lot of the people were very appreciative to it. A lot of people thought, oh, that's nice. So, you gained a lot of kudos that night.
Excellent, thank you. While we're talking about kudos, can I mention one other?
Absolutely, always want to hear the kudos.
You all are very aware of the, the theft and murder we had here in town. I'm happy to report that there is a suspect in custody for that. And we're charging that person with all twelve of our cases here in town, as well as other cases in Mount area and throughout the county, so.
That's great.
Kind of a luck, yeah, good luck on our part that someone else was able to um, arrest him and, and tie it to our cases, but we're gonna take full advantage of it, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Because it spread far and wide, the big.
Very far and wide.
Yeah.
The suspect was actually from DC.
Yep. Yep. And there was some activity in Virginia, in West Virginia, as well?
Uh, Virginia, DC, and all over Maryland, yeah, so it was.
That's great. I mean, not gr, it's great that we.
He was caught.
Yes.
Thank you. Misplaced modifier there.
And lastly, you guys saw the thing about Sergeant Kirkner's being recognized as a police officer of the year for the Business Advocates for Veterans. Uh, great, a, a great award for him. Uh, he was chosen out of every department and every law enforcement agency in Carroll County submitted a nominee, and he was selected as the recipient of the award, so it just goes to show you what the quality of people we have here in town, so. Thank you.
Good deal. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, that brings us uh, to uh, the final portion of our staff update from um, our town manager, if he has anything to share.
Oh, just a, one very uh, brief item. I did get an email today from uh, CSX or people uh, working on behalf of CSX. They, they have uh, they have some work that they need to do to crossing at the end of Main Street, so there is gonna be a closure down there. It looks like it's gonna be somewhat, sometime between December seventh and December eleventh. Um, uh, we wanna try to make the public aware of that until, but until I confirm those dates, we don't want to do any kind of mass advertising about that, but um, uh, again, there is gonna be some work at the end of Main Street. It's a pretty significant closure. Uh, I, I look at it as almost like a test case for when we actually want to do bridge work uh, there that was gonna require uh, some sort of long-term closure of that, that area. So, I have reached out to um, uh, folks there at Farm and Home, just to let them know, because I know a lot of their deliveries come from that direction. Um, just so that they're aware. Um, but this will be kind of a learning experience for all of us to see how the traffic pattern really works when that bridge is shut down for a little while.
Did you ask CSX, as I asked you to, to see if we could get that whole drill through there for our conduit to get some utilities over?
I have not heard back from them on that, that particular request, but I have a feeling it's gonna be a negative.
I've learned it can hurt to ask.
It does not hurt to ask.
All right.
Can the eighteen-wheeler come down the other way?
They can come down Sandusky.
First farm, yeah, they can, okay.
And turn on Main?
It's not.
They go straight.
Turning on Main is difficult. It, they kind of have to go straight through Okla, through Oklahoma, and then get into Farm and Home that way.
So, I saw, I saw that the, an eighteen-wheeler was uh, going into the store.
They've done it before, it's just.
But I just saw it, maybe in the last two weeks. I was, because I was thinking of the, of the town ordinance with signs. I'm like, there it is! And uh.
So, I wanted to make a left turn onto Main Street from Sandusky. I think you can clear it, just because there's nothing really on that corner. It's.
But they should be able to come down Springfield, shouldn't they?
That's the way they should be doing it.
Yeah.
And, and should be.
We just might want to get that word out, that there could be some issues if.
Farm and Home should be telling their, their freight carriers, that the way they need to come in and go out.
Correct.
Take out a corner of the uh.
We don't want to lose any buildings.
Hair salon again. All right. Is that it, Joe?
That's all.
Thank you. Um, council committee reports, uh, I'm gonna start with my left. Anyone and any, anyone has anything to share with us, uh, from any perspective, whether it's a?
Nobody cares about this, but I did want to report, the G four network is going off Comcast, which was a descendant of Tech TV. We all stopped watching G four anyway, so I was stunned that it was still broadcasting.
Didn't even know it ever existed. Thank you, Morgan.
Uh, the next planning commission meeting is on December fifth. The last one that happened uh, earlier this month was very, very quick. Um, not a whole lot to report from that, and just a reminder, I won't be here on the town council meeting in December.
You're gonna get out of that.
And, and let me piggyback on that. Is there a way for us to zoom in? You know, have us on the screens, because I'm not gonna be here either.
In December?
Yes.
We can work on that.
Okay. I'll, I'll be out of country, and probably out of, I'm not sure if I'll have connection.
Okay.
I don't know.
Take a cell phone?
I don't have one.
I was saying you're gonna miss our financial audit report.
Uh, you know, I'm saddened by that.
You can play it back. You'll play it back, right?
I will.
Hold back the tears.
A reminder that Santa Claus is coming to town. The Saturday, um, the first Saturday in December. December third. There you go.
Do you have security things written on the back of T-shirts this year, or?
Um, so we have a little more time to plan for the council members' participation. If you'd like that, we can have that discussion. So, yeah, I mean, if, if all, everyone, I think it was really appreciated.
But what'd you ask for, Schofield?
I think it was really appreciated having everyone there, so that people can clear their calendars and be part of that. We'll be again during the, during the day. So.
Councilman Grassley?
I got nothing.
Okay, Councilman Keenan?
Yeah, just some updates from DSC, um, and just, and follow-ups. Trick or treat on Main, it was very successful this year, brought more people to town on Main Street for trick or treating than ever before. Um, Lieutenant Kilgore gave some feedback, suggesting that we have it from four to six instead of five to seven, for safety reasons, so that probably will happen in twenty twenty-three. Uh, Craft Beer Festival this past weekend was very successful. Uh, we were limited to fifteen hundred tickets. I think we had eleven hundred pre-sales, and then we sold out of the rest of them within forty-five minutes. So, people could still come in uh, after the tickets were sold, but they just couldn't do the tastings. I did talk to Chief about one issue that I encountered. Um, our ordinance and rules do not allow pets at our festivals, but um, this time there was probably more pets than ever. Um, so, Chief and I are gonna work and to see about how we can limit that, um, to take more active role in that, and, and honestly, strollers, too. Um, it, it's a tight, compacted area, and the number of people who were bringing their kids in in strollers was insane. I don't know how you even manage your way through that, but they did it, so that's something else we're gonna have to look at.
Yeah, was that the first time you had the ban of the way that it was struck? I mean, I don't remember seeing the, the stage on.
No, they were set up like that last year.
Were they?
Yeah, I think last year was the first year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just because of that. The saker at the end, we were always there for the second half, was amazing.
Oh, you're saying you liked that?
I enjoyed it.
Yeah.
I just had, I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah, yeah, got it. I just wasn't sure what you're coming.
Because I liked the sayer?
On the fourth mile on Main Street is the Saturday, or, I'm sorry, Saturday, yes, the Saturday, the nineteenth, at ten AM. Starts at Sykesville Middle School. There's a hundred and thirty resident, registrants, and the goal was to have a hundred, so they're doing well. And then um, again, this is now the seventh year for the Sykesville Happy-Thon. Uh, this event raises funds to provide winter clothing and presents to children during the holidays who have been identified by the counselor at Pine Ridge Elementary School as, as, as in need.
So, on that one, um, I tried to go onto the website. I couldn't get a link to it. Is the link updated now for the, do you hit the donate button? Do you? Because I did that, and there wasn't something that said Happy-Thon below about two, three weeks ago?
No, you can just put your comment.
Oh, you put a comment? I wasn't reading the instructions, must be.
It's okay.
It happens. Too many ordinances, that's right. Thanks.
So, it's been a really, really long meeting, but I have something I need to say about a conversation I had today with Secretary Holt from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And I think it should be known to the public about the conversation I had with the Secretary of the Department of Housing and Community Development. I called to have a discussion with him regarding the fact that Sykesville did not receive any funding uh, through the district, the strategic demolition grant process that we traditionally receive uh, funding through for our neighborhood revitalization. And I was met with um, in it, for lack of, well, no, the best term to use, I was met with a quid pro quo uh, situation where I was um, more than um, well, I was repulsed, is what I told him, too, uh, by the fact that, uh, his rationale, it was uh, not shy about sharing with me that the reason why we did not receive our funding, our one point two five or any dollar of it, uh, million dollars in our most recent request for strategic demolition, which was intended to um, in finish or at least put a big dent in the uh, the improvements to the warehouse in the Sandusky lot and uh, among other things. Um, his, his report, the reason why that uh, happened, the reason why we were denied, um, was because there has not yet been a meeting of the minds, uh, which he described to be um, basically the town of Sykesville changing its zoning uh, to allow for Warfield's uh, residential development. Um, and so, I plan to actually, uh, and I told him this, I will be making a phone call um, to his boss um, this week, and if I have to go to Annapolis to sit down and have the conversation with Governor Hogan, I will. Um, I, I have never in my life, um, I, I never would have dreamed, in fact, it probably was something I think Joe and I probably joked about. That the idea that a, that a state government uh, entity, state government department would pressure a local municipality or local government to, to, to change their zoning for any reason. Let alone so that we could be um, uh, the recipients of, of a grant that we have, uh, by the way, also sat down, Team Sykesville and Team DHCD sat down for a, a virtual meeting on July fifteenth to discuss this application so that we could come up with a strategy that would meet all, would, would meet the goals of, of all those involved. And so, I, I took copious notes, and um, I just wanted my council and the public, or anyone that's listening, or will be listening to this, to know that uh, uh, the quid pro quo that the developers themselves were touting back in January, when they said to the public, the town of Sykesville will be missing out on a oppor, on many opportunities for, for grants if you do not, if they do not allow for their development to go through over there. When I heard this, I challenged that with the secretary's uh, deputy. And I brought this to his attention, and I was met with disgust on his part. That that could never be and would never be the case, and who were these developers to say such things? And here we are, nine and a half months later. And that is not only exactly what has happened.